Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Cheryl, would you do the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton, all present.
Thank you. City Council will recess to closed session.
Before we do that, we need to add an item. It's reflected on your revised agenda, but still requires a motion to add it to the closed session agenda.
Okay, I'll make a motion to add 54956.8 conference with real property negotiation.
Councilmembers Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now may we recess to closed session. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene the public session. We'll now have a report of actions taken in closed session. John?
As the City Council considered those matters listed on the revised agenda in closed session, the second of those matters was added as an urgency item by a forfeit vote of the council, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you. If you would go ahead and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for the invocation, tonight we're honored to have Pastor Fred, so... Begin.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic forth which stands, one nation under God, in this world where there is justice for all.
If you please remain standing, bow your heads in prayer with me, please. Father God, we come before your throne today. We ask for your guidance, we ask for your wisdom. And Lord, I pray, Father, for our city managers, the city council members, the city attorneys, city planners, Parks and Recreation Chief, Fire Chief, Police Chief, and all the members that play a part of governing this great city. We ask, Father, for a hedge of protection around our city's officials, oh God, as we see in its nations, oh God, there's an assault upon the leaders of our nation. So, Lord, I just ask for a hedge of protection over these men and women that you have appointed, oh God, for this great city of Norco. You said in Proverbs 11:11, "The city..." By the blessings of the upright, the city is exalted, but it is overthrown by the mouth of the evil one. And I thank you, Lord, that there's no evil ones amongst the city council or that will come against this city council. We ask for your blessings today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Okay, so we're gonna do some recognitions, proclamations, appreciations. And along with Division Chief Charlie D. Hart. Sir. Number one. Sir.
Come on up, Amy.
Come on up on this side. It's safe.
Honorable Mayor, Council, staff, and citizens, it's an honor tonight to present the certificate of recognition to Amy Gomez. I'm gonna read the certificate, and then Chief D. Hart's gonna elaborate a little bit about what Amy did for this community just a short time ago, a couple months ago, and the outcome today with the person that was apprehended. So, certificate of recognition, the city of Norco hereby recognizes Amy Gomez for her attention to detail and situational awareness, which ultimately allowed her to successfully assist Cal Fire Riverside County Fire officials in apprehending an arsonist in the city of Norco.
Amy, I'd like to thank you. If it wasn't for your observations and stuff, our arson unit wouldn't have been able to apprehend Mr. Sadler. Mr. Sadler today pled guilty, or he pled guilty a couple weeks ago. Today, he was sentenced to six years, four months, state prison. He has to register for a life as an arsonist, and he was also ordered to pay restitution of $261,000 back to the business owners. So, I would like to thank you, Amy, for your help. If it wasn't for you, the arson unit, we would not have been able to get Mr. Sadler. And I'd also like to thank Simon and Eileen for their assistance as well. They helped out a big time to help us apprehend him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to say anything, Amy?
I just...
We appreciate everything you've done.
Thank them for taking time to do this for me, and of course, my boss, my wonderful boss. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure would.
And I'll say the last words.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. July is Parks and Recreation Month, and that Parks Make Life Better. This is a statewide initiative with municipalities, state agencies, as well as county agencies that own parkland and open space. And basically, what this initiative that was started several years ago was to get people to enjoy their open space, their parks, and get out and enjoy nature. So, by recognizing July as Parks Make Life Better Month, we hope that our residents here will do that. Please come out and visit us, July 4th, at Pike's Peak, where we have a day in the park for kids, music, barbecue, and just a good old time day for everyone, and that'll be our kickoff to Parks Make Life Better Month. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Trail ride.
No, I'm sorry. I should say, it's the mayor's trail ride early in the morning.
And there'll be cash and prizes for the most patriotic uniform. Now, therefore, I, Greg Newton, Mayor of the city of Norco, on behalf of the City Council hereby proclaim and celebrate July 2017 as Parks Make Life Better Month.
Thank you, sir.
Brian, appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Pat is one of our EDAC members, and he's gonna present a certificate to the Winco Store Manager. Patrick?
Well, Winco Foods, Eli Eziani, please come up. Go. Why don't you come over here? You too. Why don't you give that to me? So, why don't you hold this? We wanna give that to you.
Thank you.
So, the city of Norco hereby honors Winco Foods and Eli for his commitment to the city of Norco, a location Winco selected as a strategic foothold in the inland empire and for following through on a pledge to fill as many as 150 jobs as possible with residents of Horstown, USA. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and Council. I just wanna use this opportunity to thank all the city of Norco and the citizens for giving us the opportunity to be here. We appreciate all the support, and we're looking forward for, you know, future businesses, future opportunity for the citizens too, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Berwin, would you like to start?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not much to report from RCTC and RTA. It's been going over the budgets and voting to approve them for the New Year's. Sunday, I attended Captain Gilman's last shift over here at Cordon Fire Station Number 57. He started there at that particular station in 1981, and so Sunday was his last shift, so he finished his shift there. He had always worked there. He's worked at 47, he's worked in Idlewild and several other places, wherever they were, but it was a nice visit. Mark, when the NART team was started several years ago, Mark was one of the persons that did a lot of the shopping for a lot of the rescue equipment that we got, and so he made a big contribution to that team. And then on Monday, I attended the ribbon cutting over at the JFK High School over here with Councilmember Grunmeyer, and I'll let her give you the details on it. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Berwin. Robin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was able to attend a wee people graduation the night after our last council meeting, which was quite entertaining, and I got to see my future students. Crystal and her staff did an amazing job, and it was very well attended. And then, like Berwin said, we went to the Hybrid School of Innovation Ribbon Cutting at JFK High School. It's brand new to the school district, and it's what they're going to call blended education. So, students are gonna be partially online and then partially direct instruction in a classroom. So, there'll be online education three days a week and direct instruction two days a week with staff over at JFK High School. And a lot of collaborative learning. They have a learning center there, areas for the students to get extra tutoring and help if necessary. Really innovative as far as the educational model and delivery, so they're looking at students that are highly competitive athletes, students that are in careers already, maybe in acting or different things, where a traditional school setting doesn't work for them, where they can go and still get instruction and assistance so that there is that face-to-face connection, so it's not 100% online. But really, a wonderful facility, great design, and it was kinda fun, they had a virtual ribbon cutting on a screen where they did a little thing. So, really great opportunity for any students that are in the CNUSD district, and happy to have it here, obviously, in Norco. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Robin. Ted?
I wasn't as busy this time. We got to meet with the Navy on our, my monthly meeting, and what we discussed with the Navy property was trying to streamline some of the improvements they're doing through a program that the federal government has worked out, and hopefully with SHPO. So, the city manager, myself, and some of the members from the Preservation Committee were there, and we all kinda agreed that it's a good deal to see some of these things come through, so they're not waiting for months and months on just essentially painting a room. So, that's a good thing. Also met with Corrections, California Corrections Center. Good news for them, and I'll read this for y'all. They passed their American Correctional Association audit, and they made a, passed it by 98.5, which is one of the high marks they get. 98.5, it's ACA, the ACA is a worldwide recognized authority in corrections, and its standards are the national benchmark for the effective operation of correctional facilities. Once an institution receives initial accreditation, it goes through a strict accreditation process every three years. I won't let you go through the rest of this, but they busted butt to get that place in good shape. They have a couple of minor things they have to change and fix, but when you consider that the facility was built in the 40s and for the hospital part, and some of those, Kevin, were built earlier than that, in the 20s that they're using, they did a pretty good job to get this accreditation, so kudos to them. The other thing that, and for those of you who don't know, and I'll toot their horn for them a little bit, since Warden Tamkins has been there since 2011, the amount of donations they have given back to this community in this area, to the Corona-Norco area, has been over $222,000 in donations to community groups. Most of them due with childrens and that. They just gave $10,000 to Special Olympics through their food program. So, just so you know, that they're, what they're doing in the community. And for the Historic Board Preservation, and good news is, they recently had a problem, the state came down, and with the, they were worried about the religious symbols in the stained glass windows that were there at the chapel that's on the base, it's been there since, it wasn't Navy built, who built it?
Christmas Day, 1945.
Since 1945, that chapel's been in existence. Well, good thing for us is we have a good historic person with Bill Wilkman, and that letter, and that's probably, we'll carry it, so they won't have to take the windows out, so good for them. So, that was good. We had a small meeting also with the mayor and myself, along with planning commissioners and the plan, working on Sixth Street. So, if you see some kind of stuff come through on changing on some of the commercial zoning, the C4 zoning, Steve and his commission will be working on that real hard, won't you, Steve? Yep, yep. And then, the day of the cowboy is coming up, July 22nd, 9:00 AM, it's a Saturday. Alyssa is doing a very good job trying to get our flag team going, so if you want to partake in the flag team, you don't have to be a lady, you can, as long as you can be a guy, they've got guys, and as long as you're 12 years old, you can ride a horse and carry a flag. Come on and help her out. This year, we added barrel racing to one of our competitions, so hopefully see some member numbers. We're gonna have, the Norco Horsemen's gonna be in the obstacle course again over there, and we are going to have mule races. We're gonna have mule chariot races along with mule chuck wagon races. So, it's gonna be a lot of fun, and $5 per carload, you can't beat that. So, July 22nd, put that on your calendar. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. Kevin?
To kinda tag team off, Robin, that I couldn't get to the opening, that Hybrid School is really, really exciting. I got to be on the naming committee, and it was really hard to figure out a way to do that, but it's gonna be a fantastic program. CRC, what's nice is that they notified us about the stained glass. The stained glass is collapsing on itself, and so we have a huge group of residents that are involved in sponsoring the stained glass. It was put in, it's dedicated to different war heroes, and they notified us, and they were concerned because they did not want to have to remove it, but it has a Jewish star and a couple of crosses on it. We're getting ready to take a bunch of tours through there, so if you have a business or a company that wants to support the stained glass project, it was put in in 1945, and what's kinda cool about it is, I don't know if people know this, but at a prison, through the inmates themselves, chapels are safe spaces. No fighting, no color wars, nothing, and so I'd like to really support that, and it's a very historic chapel. I sit on the President's Advisory Board, and if Justin gives a little report, one of the things that his boss worked really hard on bringing through was $2 million for a Veterans', and I don't know if the governor signed that or not. I'm hoping, or are we waiting, or whatever, but the truth is, it's a fantastic project. And then, there's also the Norco College, at Norco College to build a Veterans' Pass-Through Center. And in other words, guys coming out of the service, to get them educated, to sort of track them into a way to use their GI Bill. Right now, we're one of the top 20 such programs in the nation, and I think a 400-square-foot room, they would be able to expand to a much larger facility. They also have something in the works that they would partner with a lab that uses like a mile-long laser that's in a glass, and it would be something that they could actually partner with the Navy, and sort of state-of-the-art, pretty cool. And then, I was invited, and I don't know why I went, I went to Los Angeles, and I met with an equestrian conference at the L.A. Equestrian Center, and there were about 150 trainers. And their concern is, is that the public-private arenas are all going under, and they're trying to find models to support the equestrian aspect, and when they found out I was there, they all knew about Silver Lakes and wanted to know how we had done Silver Lakes. And apparently, there's several that are about ready to go under because people are purchasing them for homes and things, and they're trying to find ways to bring in one venue that actually pays for the equestrian component. The biggest problem is a lot of this land is actually in areas that developers want to put houses and things like that. And that said, they tend not to make money, as we all know, the L.A. Equestrian Center has kinda limped along for many years. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Kevin. Last week, I attended the Chino Basin Desalter Authority Board Meeting, and if you recall, at our previous council meeting, I think, or last month, that we received an overpayment, a credit from CDA of approximately $64,000, $65,000. And I just love how this organization works. So, doing our, we adopted our fiscal year budget for 2017-18, and last year, we were paying $872 an acre foot for water. This year, we will now, it's gonna go up $14 an acre foot to $886. And total water production's gonna be 35,200 acre feet. So, going through all of that, at the end of the day, we came up with a deficit in our reserve balance of $4.4 million. And for the life of me, I can't explain it. So, other than it's an estimate, and we'll see how we end up at the end of the year. And Chad, I have a question for you. Have you scheduled the meeting with Cindy Miller, the project manager from CDA, and this is in reference to our boring the water line under the Santa Ana River?
Yes, we actually had scheduled it last week, but she canceled, we're meeting tomorrow.
Morning or afternoon?
Afternoon.
I was gonna ask if Ted and I could attend that meeting, 'cause I had a couple of concerns, but we won't be here. Okay. I'll talk to you in the morning about that. This Friday, we have concerts in the park. Berwin Hannah will be the emcee for Crazy Kirk. Brian, would you make sure that Berwin has all his speeches and sponsors and all of that?
Will do. Are you bringing your overalls?
Yeah, that's what we needed to check on.
I got my speeches. I did my laundry on my bib overalls this morning, and they're hanging out on the line to dry today. And I got my red bandana, so, and I'm practicing on my accent.
Yeah, bring your teeth this year. Okay, that's all I have on that. So, let's move into City Council Consent Items. And do any council members, I'll start with Kevin. Kevin, are there any items you wish to pull? Good. Ted?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull F, G, and O.
Let's go slow here.
F.
Okay.
G, and O, unless the city manager has some news on O already?
Actually, I was gonna pull that, but...
Okay, well, all right.
So, Andy, you wanna pull O?
Yes.
Robin?
Pull me the remote for you.
Remote, yeah.
Berwin?
None. Book for proof of this.
Second.
Councilmembers Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll start with item F. Ted?
Mr. Mayor, as you well know, I live in LMD number four, so I'm gonna separate myself from that, from the vote on that, so we can make it clean. So, if we can approve all the resolutions on the other, the other four...
Yeah, so you just need to...
Then I'll step away from the four. I do like to add one other thing on LMD two, though, if I can. So, that would be the first part of it.
Okay, so let's talk about...
The LMD two discussion comes before the motion, so...
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so let me, let me...
Let's talk about LMD two.
LMD two. I'm concerned that when we met, when Brian Petrie met and had the city residents come out, we heard, we only had one couple representing one property owner come out to that meeting. I'm concerned, and I know this is only for voting for the resolution, but before we do, we vote on the actual thing, we're looking at a deficit already, as of the 1st of July, of $21,000 for that LMD, plus we're gonna look at another $7,000 or $7,800 additional deficit. So, and as of this time next year, it'll be just under $30,000 in deficit. I would like to have him look at that before we bring it back to council, and I cannot, you know, see how, the residents in that area had the opportunity, under a 218 hearing, to increase their measure two years ago, and did not. I can't see, based upon our current budget system, how we can keep supplementing that I know we're required to, but I can't justify, I just can't see justifying that, and unless we tighten it up, 'cause they decided not to. I know the services have been reduced, and Brian, and so I'm just trying to, when you look at that, and unless you can share more on that with me.
One of the...
All I remember, the agenda item is setting this for the public hearing, and so...
Okay.
We don't wanna drift off and...
I don't wanna drift, okay, then I understand. I just, that was my point on that, is since we're gonna have a public hearing, is if we can tighten that up for the public hearing, if that's okay.
We'll be providing a recommendation for District Two related to that, a reduction in services to try to balance that deficit.
Okay, thank you. All right. With that, then I will go ahead and approve...
I guess, and not trying to drift off on LMD two, knowing that we'll have a public Is it that loan balance, can that be, because that's coming out of a general fund, and that's being supplemented by all the residents in the city. Can that be called due and payable?
No, it's not a loan, it's just an annual contribution.
But there's a debt.
I mean, it's just a continuing deficit. No potential for going, I mean, we can talk about this on other points...
Yeah, like I said, I don't wanna drift off on it, but...
Going back and trying to collect additional monies from the residents to pay it off.
No, not that, but in reduction of services, you can satisfy that debt, that deficit?
And over a period of time, then we would be able to satisfy that. It would not increase.
Okay, all right. And just a note I'd like to make on LMD four, and maybe this would be addressed at the public hearing also, but since that budget seems pretty... public hearing also, but since that budget seems pretty healthy, and their assessment's going to be reduced this year, is it possible just to put like a note that the following year, we also consider a reduction in their assessments?
You can make that as, I mean, it'll be after the public hearing, assuming that's what you want to do. You can make that comment, but the statute requires that the budgets be adopted...
It's just for that year.
And levied on an annual basis.
Correct, I understand that. But this was just a...
I thought maybe you could suggest maybe they could loan it to District Two.
LMD two? I guess some things are better left unsaid. Ted, did you make a motion?
I moved to approve the resolutions for LMD one, two, three, and five, and I'll recuse myself from four.
So vote on his motion first, and then somebody else can make a motion?
Okay.
Councilmembers Hannah?
Yes.
Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
A motion to approve the remainder on LMD four. Kevin seconded it.
Councilmembers Hannah?
Yes.
Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, or excuse me, Mayor Hoffman, or Newton. Sorry, I had to skip.
Want to try...
Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
That motion carries.
He needs to formally abstain.
Yes, he, well, he recused himself.
But you asked him how he votes. I don't know whether he recused himself or abstained, but...
Well, abstain. Abstain, okay. That motion carries.
Thank you, Cheryl. Item G, Ted?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just want to, one, thank Roger for the fine work he did over there during the recon deal. The only thing, and I've spoken a little bit about this with the city manager, is that, and I see it's in the contract, but we would, I personally, or I think some of our fellow councilmembers, would like to see a little more updates on those reports, on, especially the 15 or 16 properties that we've earmarked for that. And I know that you and the city manager meet quite a bit, but I just, if we as a council can get some of those updates, more than just, I know it's, I believe it's in here for twice a year, but if we, the more updates, the better off we are on what's going on those properties.
I'd be more than pleased.
And with that, Mayor, unless anybody has questions, I'm moved to approve.
Councilmembers Hannah?
Yes.
Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. How do we want to address item O?
I will address that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
The initial recommendation was a proposal to cancel the July 5th City Council regular meeting. But since the agenda was finalized, additional information has become available, and I am going to be asking the City Council to remove this item. We will have a July 5th regular City Council meeting.
Motion to approve?
Councilmembers Hannah?
Yes.
Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item four, public comments. Do we have any cards?
Yes, Mayor, we have two cards. Justin DeWale from Assemblymember Cervantes's office.
Hi, Justin.
Hi, Mayor, Council. Thank you for having me. So, yeah, as Councilmember Bash said earlier, the budget bill was passed by the legislature last week, and Assemblymember Cervantes was able to secure $2 million in additional funding for the Veteran Resource Center at Norco College, which has been recognized as one of the best veteran resource centers in the country. So, a couple other budget highlights. Assemblymember Cervantes helped secure $200 million for career technical education, the Career Technical Education Incentive Grant, and $15.3 million to maintain the State Department of Education's Career Technical Education Pathways Program. So those are a couple other highlights from the budget, and the budget will be, must be passed by the governor, signed into law before summer recess, July 21. Also, there's been some movement on some of the Assemblymember's bills. 226 moved to Senate appropriations. That's, that bill would expedite the process of teacher credentials for military spouses. So that is in, that passed the Education Policy Committee and is on to appropriations. 296, which would create a Women's Veterans Health Task Force, that moved to Senate Veterans Affairs. Also, 1618, which would create a process to certify legitimate veteran service nonprofit organizations and create a competitive grant program for those organizations, also moved to the Senate Veterans Affairs Committee. And 193, which would establish a program to provide rebates of up to $1,800 for the purchase of used high-efficiency cars. That moved on to the Senate Transportation and Housing Committee. The only other thing I, other update I have is, we are hosting a Senior Scam Stopper event at the Rose Eldridge Senior Center this coming Monday, the 26th, from noon to 2:00 P.M. We're partnering with the Contractor State Licensing Board on that event, so do come out and do spread the word about that. Thank you very much. SB 649, I'm out of time?
No, go ahead.
SB 649, the Wireless Telecommunications Bill, is in the Assembly Local Government Policy Committee currently.
And did you have any update, is it 1250?
1250, yeah. 1250 passed in the Assembly with a very important amendment, which is, I believe it exempted contract cities...
Cities, okay.
From the provisions in it. So now, as the bill reads, it would only apply to counties.
And which way did the Assemblymember vote on that?
I believe with the amendment, she voted yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you.
See you Monday.
Bonnie Slager?
Hi. July 4th, the trail ride, and we're leaving at 9:30. We are going to cross the river. It'll be about a two-hour ride, and then when we get, is it before we go, you judge the costumes, or after?
Don't know yet.
Don't know yet, okay. Well, in case somebody goes in the river, I thought we should know.
Might be an advantage.
It might be. Anyway, we'll see you all on the 4th. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
That concludes public comments.
Thank you, Cheryl. I will now go into public hearings, item 5A. This is a public hearing. Chad, are you doing this?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Council. This item is being brought forth by a request from the Hidden Valley Holdings LLC, who owns and manages the Hidden Valley Golf Course. Their tenant, Via Malphi, which is the restaurant, is looking to expand, and they're doing expansion on the property of the clubhouse, specifically benefiting the Via Malphi Restaurant, and increasing the capacity. Part of that discussion involved their current onsite utilities. In this case, when the facility, the golf course was constructed, they installed a septic system because they, there was not a nearby, at the time, public sewer system. The homes in that area hadn't been constructed, so they were on septic, and that was allowed at the time. One of the things that came about is, some current code requires any tenant, or excuse me, tenant, any property that is within 200 feet of a public sewer system to connect when either the property is sold, and/or if there's a need to do any repairs or expansion. Basically, it doesn't allow for new expansion or replacement of a septic system when you're in 200 feet. This issue came about because in viewing the Via Malphi's application for expanding the clubhouse, we had to look at, verify if the current septic system was adequate enough to manage their demands that they would have on this expansion, as far as a larger customer base, et cetera, use, more utilities inside, et cetera. So, and to do that analysis, we actually came to an understanding and agreement with Via Malphi to have the county do that assessment, because staff internally does not have the experience with septic systems. So the county graciously worked with the applicant to review their construction plans for the building, do an analysis on all the fixtures, et cetera, that would be inside the occupancy, and made a determination that the current septic system is undersized and would have to be expanded. Specifically, the grease interceptor, which is currently about 750 gallons, would have to be expanded to 1,500. The current septic tank is acceptable in size, which is about 3, 3,700 gallons, but the leach fields would need to be almost doubled in size in order to accommodate the projected usage. So that then kicked in, what we discussed with them initially in their review of their project, was if the county came back and said that the current septic system was not adequate enough and required to be expanded or replaced, that now kicks us into the issue of the current municipal code, where they are within 200 feet of the public sewer system now, because of the homes that were built in that area. We do have a, and again, it's not where the building is, it's where the lot property lines are. So the buildings themselves on property are well deep inside the golf course, probably about 2,600 to 3,000 feet, you know, directional, right to point a straight line. But the actual property line is within 200 feet, so because it's part of the municipal code, the staff cannot grant a waiver or any exceptions to that. So we explained that the best process would be bring this forward to the City Council to seek a waiver from that requirement, because in, what they put in their letter is the financial hardship involved into constructing. What would be required would basically be a sewer main line with a lift station to connect to the public sewer system, because they're basically going to have to, they're in a gully, they're going to have to lift it up and over into, off on Valley and Frisian, just to get it down grade, so that we can, we can accept that sewer. So, and they've estimated that cost to be about $500,000 just to do that work. So their rationale is primarily financial, in order, what they have to do in order to make their project work and meet the city's requirements. So they're actually seeking a waiver of that, to be allowed to do the expansion that the county has determined should be done in order to accommodate their building. So at this time, what I'm looking for is a, the staff doesn't have a specific recommendation on it, other than outlining what the municipal code has, states should be done, and highlighting, again, what the county requirements would be, is if they're allowed to do that, move forward the expansion of the septic system. If they are allowed, the county would actually do the inspection of that and verification that everything was installed appropriately on behalf of the city. So we would be working with the county on that, but they would take the lead on that to make sure everything was done per design. And the only caveat that staff added to this discussion is, and if the council was to grant a waiver, we did prepare a resolution that indicates that it's basically a one-time waiver, not a perpetual waiver for any requirements, such that if there is any future development or expansion, which is obviously a positive thing, if they're able to do that in the future, at some point, or that next item, we'd recommend there be a condition that they would have to connect to the sewer at that point. And it's any increase, whether it be determined by the county or the city, on demand of their septic, on their septic system, would condition them to connect to the public sewer at that time. So they'll know, at least moving forward, any future plans will include and must include that caveat, that they're going to have to plan for the cost for the infrastructure. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chad. Any questions to staff? Berwyn?
No.
Robin?
No.
Ted?
I got a couple. The cost to county, did they charge us for that?
The applicant actually paid the county directly.
Okay, so that was the cost that covered that. And as far as their inspections on the leach fields and things like that, is that something they also do periodically, to ensure this thing is run appropriately?
No, because the, technically, the city of Norco is the jurisdictional body for septic systems. The county's only stepping in, in this one case, because we've asked them to.
Okay, all right, so, but are there inspections of leach lines done periodically to make sure that we're, they're not exceeding the capacity?
Not currently.
You wouldn't know until you think, okay.
Not currently, no, not on any property, no.
All right. And how many of these waivers have we ever issued?
I don't think any, but I'm not sure. I didn't actually, I haven't heard of any.
And you're, and let me clarify, in your opinion, is that this is not a permanent waiver?
In, in our resolution, we indicated and specified as a one-time waiver.
And for how long a time?
Well, it's until, the caveat is, it's a one-time waiver for this instance, and if and when they ever expand, that puts any additional demand on the septic system, like if they came in with another building that was going to put demand on the septic system at that time, they would have to connect to the sewer.
And, and don't get me wrong, I want to see them to succeed. I'm just thinking, would it be possible if we were to put a time limit on this waiver of five years? Is that even a feasible thing, that where they could come back in, just to make sure that everything is, is right?
I guess, well, when you say come back in, just to do an inspection?
Yeah, do a renewal of the waiver for five years. I'm hoping in five years, they're going to do, well, they're going to be able to pay for a hook-up to the sewer line, or rather, constructions going up in there to make it easier for them.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how to...
Yeah, I suppose a resolution could reflect that it's five years automatically renewable.
Okay, yeah, that would be something.
And based upon an inspection by the city.
That's, that's feasible. Okay. Thank you, Chad.
I'm not sure how to, how that would be indicated in the resolution, as far as what you're looking, could you...
Just like, just like John said, so we could grant it for five years renewable, just so that once...
While you're finishing talking, I'll look for a resolution.
You'll look for that? Okay. No further questions.
Thank you, Ted. Kevin? Back on Ted's comment, could you also maybe condition that to have like a yearly inspection done by the county, since the existing one was found to be broken?
Uh, I...
And not functioning?
Yeah, I think if it's, if, I think, I'm not sure as far as, as far as, I don't know if it's, if it's a condition that the City Council places, I guess, in the resolution that they're going to require, and if the applicant, I would place, I guess I would make sure that it's the, indicates that the applicant must pay for said inspection, and that they actually agree to that, that the, I don't see why we couldn't do it, absolutely. I would definitely defer to the county, because they have that expertise.
Sure.
That sounds like it eliminates Ted's concern about five years.
Okay. No other questions to staff? I'm going to open the public hearing. Cheryl, do we have any cards?
No cards on this item.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back for any discussion. So if I could, I'd like to ask a few questions. So I have this piece of paper here that tells me under Norco Ridge Ranch, well, let me qualify this first, as far as the restaurant itself and the applicant, they've been great neighbors, it's a good restaurant, and certainly want to see them succeed. But with that, I have this Norco Ridge Ranch Master Wastewater Facilities Plan. Now, on the map that you showed us, that you submitted to council, it shows a sewer line, the connections at, at the bottom of Frisian Avenue and Valley. the connections at, at the bottom of Friesian Avenue and Valley. And this going back to, I'm going to say, early 2000s, that, this is called W4 wastewater, that down Valley, down Valley Boulevard, onto the golf course, all the way to, to the parking lot, and then all the way down Valley to Friesian, was to be installed a lift station, a force main, and all the sewer lines. So, where I have problems with this is that this is work that should have been done years ago with this development, and then you have the owner of the golf course telling his tenant, gee, I'm really sorry for your burden, it's going to cost you a half a million dollars, when in fact, he should have put this in a long time ago. I don't know how we got there, how it got missed, but it's certainly very clear that that sewer should have been installed. The other concern I have is that with this, with that septic, if you were to go under the Hidden Valley Golf Course hydrology report, this is a major tributary drainage area and in, with that assumption that this is an environmentally sensitive area. And to have, this is, the reason we had this original ordinance was that, well, you don't want septic systems, and you especially don't want them when they're non-functioning and they're broken. So, my question to you, Chad, is that I don't want to put the restaurant in a box, okay? That it makes them difficult, makes their difficulty to operate. But our code really says you can't, am I interpreting our code correctly, that the septic can be repaired, the existing septic can be repaired or cannot be repaired?
It, it does not use the specific word repair, it says replace, which is, to me, synonymous with repair. Because if the, if your leach lines were broken, I would replace them, so which in essence repair. So, it doesn't say the specific word repair, but replace is a synonym for that, in my opinion.
Okay, so they, they would be allowed to repair, the owner of the golf course would have to repair the existing leach lines, correct? And no expansion?
The, the rule basically says that any new replace or expansion of, if you're within 200 feet, you can't do it. So, technically, right now, if it was just, if we determined that the, which we have is that the leach fields on their own aren't working anymore and they need to be replaced, then by definition, in the municipal code, because they're within 200 feet, they cannot replace them, they have to connect to sewer. So, for, to go back to your other example for, and one of the concerns that was brought up to me by staff is that if we do the annual inspection, that's done by the county, and they determine that something is not functioning, needs to be replaced, does that automatically, per the conditions you may put on, require them to then upgrade to the sewer system? Or can they make that replacement or fix? That's one of the things I'd want to make sure is, because we're doing the inspections as a caveat, and they're paying for them every year to be done by the county, but if the county finds something, can they make that repair? Or is it automatically kick in to, nope, you need to go ahead and, regardless how small that repair is? So, I just would like to quantify that as far as discussion item, where we think we would go with that.
Right. Yeah, because where it seems you're going today, knowing that that, that system's broken and not functioning, now it almost becomes a code case.
Yes.
For code compliance.
Right. Yeah, it's definitely a health issue at that point.
Yeah, it's how far do you want to take it? I mean, I'm looking at it, you have an applicant that's innocent in this, and all she wants to do is expand her business, but the whole system, like I said, and this goes all the way back to years ago when the property owner should have had that sewer put in with, with documentation that says it was or, you know, should have been. So, my personal opinion, I'm just without, I'd like to hear some more discussion, but I'm, right now, with agreeing to the planning commission's recommendation was that the existing septic system is not adequate to support the sewer demands, that if they want to move forward with this, they hook to the sewer. And that is how I'm taking the recommendation of the planning commission.
Wasn't the recommendation?
And am I looking at that correctly, Steve?
If I put that in here.
If the county at Riverside Department of Environmental Health determines the existing septic system is not adequate to support the sewer demands for the property, the property shall connect to the city sewer system as required under the Norco Municipal Code.
Yep, that's correct. That's correct, what the planning commission recommended.
Right.
I have a question on that. Did she get permits? In other words, did the county sign off on this as long as she was able to correct that situation?
The, the county is, has approved their plan to upgrade the system.
So, essentially, they have followed what the planning commission stated they needed to do?
Well, based off what the planning commission said is, they basically made a blank statement saying if it's, if the current system is inadequate, they must connect to the public sewer system.
But didn't they also talk about the fact that they brought the county into it? That's part of the reason you guys went forward with that? That's a yes?
Part of the meeting.
The, because the issue at the, yeah, because we, at the time when the planning commission reviewed it, we didn't, we did not know what the outcome of testing of the system was going to be. The assumption was that it was going to prove to be okay. After the planning commission made the recommendation, we found out that the system was not okay. So, the, the, so the planning commission approved it, provided that the system was okay. So, that's, that's.
But they brought in the, so how did the county get involved?
Well, we instructed them to, to work with the county to make that first determination because we don't have the expertise the county does, is to contract with them just to determine, based off of their actual plans and usage and fixture counts, et cetera, of, based off those demands and uses, would the existing septic system in its size and capacity meet the current, meet the proposed expansion? If it did, then it was a non-issue because it would meet the requirement. What has, what has occurred since then is they determined it's not adequate, it needs to be expanded, which now gets us into the definitions of the municipal code, what should be done. And in this case, its requirement is to connect to the sewer. They're now seeking the waiver because of the financial hardship of what that's going to cost.
Yeah, the, we need to separate the two things. The planning commission approved it, but now we found out that the system is inadequate, and so now they're seeking a waiver of the, the code stipulation that says you can't expand without connecting, well, you can't.
With corrections. And the county hasn't, has the county already issued a, an approval in terms of a blessing on this?
Yes, they have.
With the corrections?
Yes, they have approved the proposed new septic system. If, if the city approves that, do, and they will be part of that process to make sure it's constructed according to the plans.
You know, 2009 happened, that's a reality. 2009 happened, and that's why a lot of stuff didn't get built. And I get, totally get that this probably should have gone in before, but most of the players are gone. I can remember when that golf course was famous for tents, and they have worked very, very hard to bring that golf course back. The person that wants to do this is, their family's been doing business in this community for 40 years, longer. I totally get that, that it should be hooked up to the sewer, but at the same time, we go out killing ourselves to bring business into the town, and county has blessed this. I don't mind the inspections, I don't mind the five years. I totally understand that darned property owner should have done it, but I also have to look forward. I've heard this very council say, gee, they've been through enough, and we just toss the municipal code aside, and I think in this case, that personally, I think if the county blesses this, if, if this, if the system's considered safe, that we need to support this project. I mean, one of the things that we really need in the city of Norco is a larger room in order to have meetings and things. We have a person here who's a Norco resident, willing to put thousands of dollars into this community, and if the system works, I, I see no reason why we shouldn't be supporting this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, Mr. Mayor, and I don't know if it's as feasible according to the city attorney as, and I know the owner's sitting out there, if it's even feasible, if you'd like to come up and explain why, if it's possible, why they didn't hook up initially, or that, would that be?
I mean, if that's.
If it's.
If he, if he cares to.
He wants to.
If he's standing up. Yep.
Just so we get a better understanding as a council.
Sure. Good evening.
Well, I guess I'm dealing with some memory here, but the idea that the sewer was being connected outside of the project of the clubhouse, I think was anticipating, there's about 70 acres in there that has not been developed, and the idea of putting the sewer in was when we developed those houses. We haven't developed them, and we know, and actually would absolutely put the sewer in when those, that property was developed. The clubhouse, to say within a 200-foot radius, or, we aren't anywhere near a sewer in 200 feet. I know the boundary of the golf course goes all over the place, but the clubhouse is 2,000 to 3,000 feet from the nearest sewer capacity. So, to say it's 200 is true from a title standpoint, but from a, from a sewer connection standpoint is certainly not true at all. So, I guess Nicole has come to Hidden Valley many, many years ago, I guess, and the golf course itself has struggled all these years. 10th thing was not a good, a good time for the golf course. But Nicole has built a nice wedding business there, and, and it is true, most brides want more than 110 people at the table. And so, she's convinced us that we would support her on the expansion, that the, she could do quite a bit more wedding business and all these other features you're talking about, a bigger room for the city, that would also fall into this thing. So, I think the gut issue is really more the 300 feet. We aren't, we aren't near the sewer with this clubhouse, and, and I'm unaware of the plan of connecting to the sewer if we didn't do anything other than have a clubhouse there. If we did any housing, we had to collect to the sewer, was my understanding. So, I guess I'll be happy to answer any other questions. It's a burden that just overwhelms the thing from the standpoint of expanding this, this wedding facility and clubhouse, having it connect to a mile of sewer just makes it impossible. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to respond.
Ted?
Yeah, Mr. Cox, I do, so, the intent was when the rest of the houses were going to be put in there.
Yes.
That's when the rest of the sewer was going to be connected, correct?
That's right.
And I, and I don't want to put you on a timeline, I know that the lots are there and they've been there, but do you have a timeline or a projected timeline when those other houses will be built?
Well, Sun Cow did the map, and it really wasn't something that we spent a lot of time doing. The map was a bad map from a standpoint, from our standpoint, and so, in this last year, we've been trying to figure out how to record it, and there's just no way. The original track, road that went around the hill was, again, one of those expensive things you couldn't do. So, I think our desire is to come back and, within your rules, create the 27 lots or whatever we have there to generate cash flow to try to get rid of some of the debt on the golf course. We were going to do that this year, but it got just, the map, we thought, hey, we had another year or two on it, and I guess the interpretation was made, I don't know if it expired now, but if it hadn't, it's within just a few, few months. So, we do want to complete it someday, but don't have a hard, hard.
So, upon completion, that's when the sewer line will be.
Absolutely. We've understood that completely all the time. One thing that is true here, if we would put the sewer in, you'd have to have a sewer pump, and that would cost the city a lot of money. You know, you got to pump that stuff rather than gravity, and so, there's a benefit to the city here of, of not putting a sewer pump in. Doing it now would cost us a lot of money, would just increase the operational cost of the city. Think that's relevant, I guess.
Do you have another one?
No.
Kevin?
You make a good point, that's when the sewer system was supposed to go in.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And, well.
I'd like to.
Yeah.
Say something nice about Nicole here, you, if you've met her.
Absolutely.
She's our salvation at the golf course, it is 20 years old now, and we've lost money over that 20 years, and she's, she's really brought economic momentum to the table that she, she's turning some good dollars there, and we have a joint venture with her. So, in the, in this relationship, we're paying for the sewer, she's not, but we, in our joint venture with her, we're, we're mutually paying for the expansion of the wedding facility.
Robin? Any questions? Berwin?
I don't have a question, too, I've got some stuff.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Berwin.
No, I don't see why we should punish the owner of the restaurant on this thing that she didn't have anything to do with back when the clubhouse was built, and I've had experience with septic tanks before I moved out here to California. We had one there that worked real good for several years, and we had a major flood and water set there on top of my property for about four days, and when it went down, well, my leach field was totally ruined, so I had to go back in there and redo the leach lines on it, and I added some to it, and it worked fine after that, and I don't, I don't see why this one wouldn't if they just go in there and tear out the damaged ones and put in new ones and maybe add, add some more lines to it, I think it would work, but I don't think it's the owner of the restaurant's fault that this wasn't hooked up 20 years ago or whenever it was built, and I'd, I'd hate to see him put into a financial hardship because of this, so, I'm in favor of waiving it this one time and doing the inspections, like we said, for one, once a year. Thank you.
Did you plant your garden over your leach lines?
Pardon me?
Did you plant your garden over your leach lines?
I sure had good grass.
Yeah, we did.
There we go.
Robin?
Well, I'm going to look at this from the wedding perspective. I have gone to the venue several times, and I know the economic impact of what they do over there for other businesses in the community is pretty important, and I also know that they would be able to get more business if they were able to expand because it's a pretty small facility. We're looking at like 10 to 15 tables most of the time when we do events over there. So, I think the economic impact of what they're doing and what they're generating there definitely warrants looking at allowing a waiver at this point in time to allow them some expansion. I do like the idea of the county doing the inspections on a regular basis to make sure that things are working appropriately, and then, you know, at some point, if they're a venue that's getting a lot of business and need to expand again, then definitely putting that caveat. and need to expand again, then definitely putting that caveat in there that they do have to go to sewer and this would be a one-time waiver for that.
Ted, anything else?
No, I just, I agree with Mr. Cox. Now that I understand why the homes were built, that's kind of a good clarification of why that sewer line wasn't completed. Can John share with me some other information? And in the long history of this thing, since the hills were developed, but I would, I'm not a big fan of waivers, but at this one, because of the way the business is set up, I think it should be granted. But I would only grant it for about five years with a renewable waiver. So every five years, we can look at it as a renewal because that thing, I don't want to put it where it never gets, it never goes to sewer if those homes get built.
Still with the yearly inspection?
With the yearly inspection, but grant the waiver for five years and then make it renewable so that, one, we start getting the rest of that area developed.
Would putting a provision in the resolution, the waiver resolution, requiring that the waiver be abandoned upon construction of adjacent housing?
Absolutely, absolutely, because they'll have to put one in anyway.
Instead of the five years, the only issue that I have with five years is five years from now, if there's no housing built, we're going to be sitting, having a discussion.
Discussion again.
The same discussion with somebody who's now been operating for five years is in a more difficult situation than even now.
Oh, yeah. I'll change that to where if the houses are built, then it's...
Why do we need to compound it? Wouldn't just the yearly inspection suffice?
I have a question on the yearly inspection.
Well, I was just going to, the language that I wrote in the resolution for the yearly inspection is simply that it be inspected and determined to be in compliance with applicable regulations.
I'm just wondering, since none of us are experts and county seems to be, maybe we should find out what their recommendation is in terms of inspections. Would they say yearly? I mean, that's an additional cost. And what if they came back and said, well, three years is sufficient? Because it sounds to me that after twenty years, the system probably just failed as leach lines do fail. Then they just have to fix it. But I'm wondering if rather than the yearly inspection, we ask the county and go by what their recommendation is.
I mean, we certainly could go back to county, ask them, what would they recommend for any property to do inspections of this type of property, this nature? And, you know, they may say, you know, every five years, every two years, I'm not sure. We can do any schedule.
That's all. I'm just trying to be as fair as possible.
And just leave it at that? And nothing on contingencies with homes being built or, you know, those lots are entitled and that's it? Yeah, there's twenty-eight lots, twenty-eight or thirty and they're entitled.
Don't they have to start the process over again now?
The map expired.
It's expired, so they'd have to start over.
It's not entitled, so they're not entitled.
But the vacant lots have entitlement.
Well, it's a vacant lot, but it doesn't have any lots for houses now. The map expired.
Right.
Yeah. And keep in mind that the waiver as it's drafted says that once the housing is built, I mean, first of all, the specific plan requires it, as you pointed out, but in addition, the waiver goes away when there's additional improvements of any kind built on the property.
Okay, so with the specific plan that we talked, that you talked about with houses in the sewer, that would include any construction of those homes would automatically trip the sewer hook up, correct?
Yeah, Hidden Valley.
No, it wouldn't because on that map for the sewer, it shows there's two lots on, is that Country Club Road? Is that how you define that? There's two lots on Country Club Road and it shows that there was going to be a sewer, or there was a sewer, in front of those lots which go all the way up to the parking lot.
Okay.
But it's very clear in Norco Ridge Ranch specific plan that the golf course has, it's an exception, that nothing in that specific plan says the golf course has to hook up to the sewer.
So there's no...
It's excluded from the specific plan.
Okay, so there's no, John, there's no obligation for them to ever hook up?
No, but the waiver, but the waiver as it's drafted says, and frankly, the planning commission was more concerned about the other structure which exists on the property now, that the current waiver says you're fine unless there's any other improvement on the property, period.
Sure.
Well, we moved from coal shop out of the clubhouse.
No, the language in the resolution says improvement which has the effect of increasing the capacity.
I would recommend that perhaps the council should pick a timeframe that they would like to see inspections done, only because the county may have no requirement to inspections. It could be simply a self-reporting.
The county does not have a requirement.
Yeah, so you would get no inspections at that point if you adopted the resolution that way. So if there's a desire to have a routine inspection at some point, maybe it's every three years. And if there is an inspection process, I would like a clarification in that, that if there's deemed to be something determined to be malfunction needs to be repaired, that they be provided the ability to do that repair.
Yeah, no, that will include that.
Because otherwise, we'll be back in the same situation of can they get a waiver to make that repair?
Why don't we say two years? If we're between one and three, let's split the difference and just say every two years.
Biannually.
Okay.
Probably deal with the...
They're good forever till they break. That's...
I'm fine with that.
That's the truth.
So what, do we have something we can make a motion on?
If you'd like, I'll read the massage language, which is basically what we've said, beginning at the now forebear be a result. The city councils, the Norco City Council grants a one-time waiver for Norco Municipal Code section, requiring connection to the public sewer system and allow expansion and any future required repair of the existing septic system. Now therefore granting, city council also places conditions on the waiver requiring that the property connect to public sewer system should there be any future improvement or expansion on the property that would increase the demands on the sewer system based on the city and/or county review. And further, that the septic system be inspected by the county riverside biannually at the owner's cost and found to be compliant with applicable regulations.
I make a motion that we accept that.
Second?
Council members Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash.
Yes.
Mayor Portem Hoffman.
Yes.
Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just for one second. Nicole's, just so, now we're over. Nicole's daughter is actually the catcher for probably the best, well, is the Gatorade pitcher of the year for softball, just so we know catcher's the most important person to a pitcher and just wanted to make, let people know that. Oklahoma State, correct?
Um, Oklahoma.
Oklahoma, there you go. Thank you.
So we used to go to these OU OSU games in Stillwater, Oklahoma where Garth Brooks would play. And those games, those are the biggest corn-fed boys I've ever seen in my life.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are.
You're going to need a bigger restaurant to feed them. Okay. Thank you. All right, item five B. Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to, we have a continuance. On five B.
What do we need to do? Basically, staff is recommending that this item be continued to July 19th because the grading plans are not ready and so we'll bring it back for a public hearing on July 19th.
Okay.
May I get a motion on that, please?
Yeah, I have a question though.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Since we're moving this to a date certain, are we certain that the engineering drawings are going to be in hand?
Yes, we believe so.
Okay. Kevin, you made a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Second?
Yes.
Council members Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Portem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item six A, this is a discussion action item, appointments to various city commissions and the Economic Development Advisory Council. Cheryl?
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Again, this is an item to consider, applications received for the various city commissions and the Economic Development Advisory Council. There was a public notice release for this recruitment period. It was, began on May 9th of this year, so it ended on June 12th. And so it's almost a full five and a half weeks of recruitment. And during that time period, the city clerk's office received a total of sixteen applications. This recruitment period was to accept applications for nine vacancies on the various commissions and EDAC. One is an unscheduled vacancy as a result of resignation of Jim Turpin on the Streets, Trails and Utilities Commission. The other eight vacancies are, excuse me, listed there for the other commissions and Listed there on the screen are the sixteen applications received for the commissions. Just some brief requirements needed to serve on any city commission. Those are listed there as required by Norco Municipal Code, Chapter 2.22. I just briefly wanted to go through some of the requirements for the Economic Development Advisory Council. These were organizational modifications that were adopted by the city council in August of 2016. Excuse me. And we expanded the definition of the requirements back in August. And they're listed there with three thresholds of eligibility to serve on EDAC. One being to, the applicant must be an owner of a business located within the city. The second is the applicant must hold a management level position in a business within the city. Or the third eligibility requirement is to be a Norco resident, but have relevant economic development expertise. And some examples are listed there. That third threshold required that only two members meet that threshold at any given time on EDAC. So basically what I've done is I've broken down based on those three thresholds and the applications that were received and reviewed at the city clerk's office. For the first threshold, we have three applicants which fall under that first category. That would be Scott DeRosa, who's an incumbent, Diane Collins, and then a new two, new information that is different than what you have in your staff report, that was just received between the time that the staff report was written until today. We do know that Michael Kail does have a consulting business within the city of Norco, so he qualifies under that first threshold. We didn't have any applications that fell under that second threshold. And then the third threshold, we have three applications, Gabe Martin, Bill Schwab and Patricia Whitaker, two of those being incumbents. But again, as it's stated in the resolution adopted last year, we already, with the current membership in EDAC, we already have the two maximum number of seats that fill that third So again, here are the applicants. I did reach out to the applicants to attend. I do believe most of them are here and they would like to speak. I have cards from them. I did receive notification this evening from Kathy Stevens. She unfortunately could not make it, send her regrets. Her father passed away and is, she's currently in Florida, so she couldn't make it. So if that concludes my presentation, if you have any questions, or we can go straight into having the applicants come up and speak.
Thank you, Cheryl. Any questions of the city clerk? Berwin?
No.
Robin?
No.
Ted? Kevin? Cards, please.
I got one plate.
Sure.
I got a message from...
So noted.
Streets and Trail.
Okay. First card I have is for Jason Borzma.
How you doing?
Good.
Hello, council members of Norco. My name is Jason Borzma. I'm applying for the Parks and Recreational Commission. A little bit about myself is I've lived in Norco here for now eighteen years. I've been a board member of Norco Little League for eight years. Four of those years, or two years prior to that, I've been the vice president of Norco Little League. Last two years, I've been the president of Norco Little League. I am moving on and this is something I was interested in. We go, I do all the meetings with Parks and Recs already for Norco Little League and I think this is a good move for me. I'm leaving Norco Little League this year, so I'm moving on. I've also been with the Norco Livestock Committee for a few years now and then I also sit on the FFA Advisory Committee. Sorry, I don't like public speaking, so I'm a little nervous. I'm trying to get over that and Little League does the same thing to me. My hope is I can help improve youth programs here, using the parks and how they use the parks. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jason. You did good.
Diane Collins.
Diane.
Good evening. So, good evening, Mayor, council members. So when my role in managing the Norco Chamber of Commerce ended a couple of months ago, I knew there'd be a number of things I missed and being a representative on EDAC was a big one. Learning that there would soon be an opportunity for me to submit my application for EDAC gave me hope that I could continue to serve my community through participation as a business owner here in this town. During the approximately three years I sat on EDAC as the chamber rep, I exhibited nearly perfect attendance, enabling me to be an active, informed and productive member of the team. Plus, I participated on a number of subcommittees, including Business Enhancement, which recommends the businesses to be recognized by city council each month and has worked to not just enhance the business community, but to also utilize the business community to enhance the city. New viewpoints on an advisory board such as this can be a great benefit and I feel that I provide not only a historical perspective from the past years, but also a fresh perspective since I would be representing a view unencumbered by the stance of the organization I represented, but rather my own view on what is best for the entire community. Economic development can be defined as efforts that seek to improve the economic well-being and quality of life for a community by creating and/or retaining jobs and supporting or growing incomes in the tax base. EDAC sits in a strategic position, both advising and making recommendations to you for improving the city's economy, but also advocating within the business community for city projects and initiatives and being a positive representative within the city. Should you appoint me tonight, I look to provide constructive input and active participation to the advisory council, which is such an important piece of our city government. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Diane. Any questions for Diane? Okay, thank you.
Patricia Overstreet?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Well, I would request that I continue on the Historic Preservation Commission. Since I've been here now thirty-nine years over our fifty-three years of the city, I'm part... Since I've been here now 39 years over our 53 years of the city, I'm part of that history, and it's just been hysterical for me to go help Chuck Wilson in our collections room, going through newspaper articles that I remember reading when it actually happened. It's been great working with Mr. Wilson and Bill Wilkman and the rest of the commission. There's a steep learning curve, since I'd never done anything like that, and I apologize now for my original application. I thought my only qualification was I was older than dirt. I have learned something since I've been on that commission. And while I'm up, I would like to endorse Mr. Jim Pollard for Streets and Trails. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Michael DeRosa is going to speak on behalf of Scott DeRosa.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Newton, city council, and staff. A week ago, Scott's mare rolled on him, broke his ankle, and he had surgery a couple days ago, so he regrets that he's not able to be here this evening. But I would like to read a statement on his behalf. "It has been my pleasure to serve on the EDAC council as a member as well as its current vice chair. During these past 12 months of serving, I have led an active participant of the following EDAC projects: researching and reporting on the opportunities of Norco having a certified farmer's market; research and identifying city revenue opportunities within the real estate and mortgage sector; sitting on the Egg Ranch Development Discussion Group; leading the Business Appreciation Award Selection Work Group, as well as being the presenter of the award at the city council meetings; participating in the Community Outreach Work Group; attending the city strategic plan workshops and other workshops that have had a tie into what EDAC's mission is. I've also been a hands-on volunteer, going door-to-door to our local businesses and schools, hanging and handing out flyers of important city events in which our council encourages community attendance. I felt great pride with the contributions of time that I have given to EDAC thus far, and I'm very excited to tackle the opportunities that are current and still yet to come, from which I hope our city and business community will benefit. If given the opportunity to continue as a member of EDAC as well as its vice chair, I promise a commitment of loyalty and hard work to both EDAC and to you, my city council." Thank you, Scott DeRosa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cynthia Gunderson.
Hello. I'll make it short and sweet, just like me, hopefully. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and citizens. So you already know my name, Cynthia Gunderson, and I'm hoping to be appointed to the Streets, Trails, and Utilities Commission. And I emailed everybody, all the councilmembers, because Wednesday is my Bible study night, but it actually got canceled today, so I wrote this as fast as I could and got here as fast as I can, once I heard it was canceled. Thank you, because Wednesday nights, that's usually what I do. Tuesday is reserved for Riverside Community College District for, because I work for the Riverside Community College District, in case I have to attend a board meeting. And so for this particular commission, Mondays would work for me personally. And the reason I applied for this particular one, because it's near and dear to my heart, because I grew up in the city of El Monte, and I don't know if any of you are familiar with that. It used to be Horsetown, and it's not that anymore. It's very sad that where there used to be land with horses, you know, one person's property, they'd pull it down and put like about eight houses on top of each other. So going back there, it's just so depressing and sad. So Norco has always been my dream town to live in, and that came true to me. And I love it here, I live here, I work here, I volunteer here. I volunteer for the Hundred Mile Club a lot, because running is my passion as well. I was really sad when the Norconian Run 5K came around. It was during the same time as Ragnar, which is something I do a lot, and I wish it was at the same time every year so I could plan for it. And I also, I promoted it, because I work at Norco College, so I promoted it, and I had a lot of people attend and heard how it went. The president walked it. He's not crazy about running, president of Norco College. And it was a great event, and it's, working with the Navy's great. I just, I just love this town. I mean, I'm always here, I don't want to leave it, I don't want to go on vacation, I just want to hang out here. It's just, it's just great. Let's see, I guess, my qualifications, like educationally, I have a bachelor's in business administration. I'm currently working on my MBA with an emphasis in public administration. Yes, this is the first time I'm public speaking, so hopefully I'm doing all right. And if appointed, I promise to attend all meetings and take everything seriously. Research is what I do and my passion, so I don't make decisions lightly, I always research everything thoroughly. I always pay attention to what's happening in my community. And I just want to thank you for taking the time, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Hi, Mike.
Hello. I'd like to thank you for a few minutes of your time. I applied for the Parks and Rec Commission. Take it back 14 years ago, I moved my family from Anaheim with a cat. We soon developed a love for horses, thanks to the Parks and Recreation Committee and Stacy Turner's class, we took her class, and we started breeding Andelusians, which we've given away more than we've sold, because they're very therapeutic. Going back a little bit, I served on the personal side six years with the Los Angeles Police Department, 25 years with the Department of Corrections, retired five years ago as a correctional counselor at a Chino Institution for Men. I also served for the last nine years as a district manager for the Foundation for the Pure Spanish Horse, which covers California, Nevada, and Hawaii. My family loves this town, I wish we would have found it out a lot earlier. So the reason I'm applying now is I didn't have time prior to the last 14 years, I was too busy. I've been retired five years, I'm a private investigator and a licensed firearms instructor. That doesn't take all my time. All my honeydews are done, so now it's time to do something that I really want to do, and that's why I've applied for the Parks and Recreation. Twenty-five, 20 years with the California Youth Authority, I saw the kids, inner-city kids. They had no idea what a park looked like, they really needed recreation programs. When I moved here 14 years ago, there were a lot of city programs. I don't know what happened to them, but my goal would be to try and reinforce those using the community leaders, community owners. We have a wealth of resources and the business owners here, and I can't, I don't understand why we can't get them to volunteer time to teach our citizens of Norco to do what they do best. So that's why I've applied for this commission, and I hope I'm considered for this position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm going to keep it brief. I know we're getting to the end of the evening, and tends to, things tend to draw out, and attention spans go down a little bit. But a little bit about myself, my name's Mike Cale. Me and my wife lived in Norco for 12 and a half years. We moved here from Chino Hills. If anybody knows Chino Hills 22 years ago, the reason why we moved there was to get away from some of the city, because we lived in Pasadena prior to that, and it just grew into something that, you know, was cramped and became metropolitan feeling, and we wanted to get back to what my wife's Midwest roots were, which was, you know, open fields, and my father lived in Nebraska, so I appreciate that Midwest lifestyle and that work ethic. And that's, we really liked the Norco lifestyle. We're animal lovers, we've had labs all the time, we don't have horses, our property's a little bit steep for those guys, and they're a little bit expensive, according to my wife, because she had them when she was children, but we certainly are animal lovers, and we love that perspective on the community. I believe I'm qualified for this position, because I have 25 years in, at the executive level, in multiple different concepts, retail, restaurant, service, and now financial services, a way which I manage a business that generates $500 million in annual revenues and spans the entire Western United States, all the way to Texas. In that capacity, I have a lot of involvement in real estate decisions, all the way from construction and site selection, marketing, logistics, financial planning and budgeting, full P&amp;L responsibility, business development, and turnaround strategies. I also have a lot of experience working with cross-functional teams in a collaborative manner to overcome some serious business challenges and in a lot of different scenarios. I also run a small consulting business out of my home here in Norco. But more than that, I believe in the large opportunity that Norco has. I think the city is wonderful, and it just has, just could be a serious draw for a lot more folks than it is today from a tourism feel. It has a unique rural feel that just kind of blends well with some of the things that we're trying to achieve here from a business perspective. You know, the tourism potential, as I said before, with, you know, the Ingles Equestrian Center, the Sixth Street, and Hamner developing out, Silver Lakes, the multi-purpose facility, and the Hidden Valley Golf Club. So lastly, I just feel honored if I could serve on the committee and give some of my experience back to the community that I live in. I have a lot of experience, and I'm no stranger to hard work, and although I have, you know, a lot of job responsibilities currently, I would dedicate the time it takes to do what I need to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Got the hook.
Hi, Gabriel.
Good.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Gabriel Martin. I have been a Norco resident for over 20 years. I am currently a member of EDAC. A little bit about my background, I have over 10 years of economic development experience. I worked for the County of Riverside Economic Development Agency, implemented and did a lot of economic development projects and programs there. I currently work for the County of San Bernardino and the Real Estate Services Department. I currently am doing a lot of projects and programs that implement economic development, workforce development, community development, and redevelopment. I've been on the committee for about a year and a half, and I admire the city council and the city manager's vision. I participated in the Saturday workshops for the strategic plan. You know, the city has a great vision in regards to implementing economic development policy, not with, just within the city, but regionally, with great projects like Silver Lakes. My goal is to serve a full term. It would be a great honor for me to serve that full term and help implement the city's strategic plans, their vision, and their goals. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Jim Pollard.
Hi, Jim.
Good evening. My name is Jim Pollard, and I'm running for Streets and Trails Commission. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, city staff. I've lived here, I live at 2180 San Anita Road, and over where the new Norco Village is going in, so we're real excited about that. We've lived here in Norco for 40 years. We've owned, trained, trail horses, Jimcana, running quarters, pigs, calves, chickens, now three grandchildren. That's the hardest. But I see the need for, you know, a trail maintenance plan to keep Norco the way it was. Like I say, I've been here for 40 years, I've seen a lot of, a lot of changes, but I'm proud that the city's, you know, stuck with the horse community. And I think that there is a need, you know, for tumbleweed and trail maintenance. I'm currently a member of the Horsemen's Association, American Legion Post 328, Boy Scouts America 233 here in Norco, and I'm a district camping commissioner for the Temescal district. And I'm a mayor badge councilor for a citizenship in the community for the boys, which is important that we train them, that we have to get back to the city or get involved too. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Jim.
That's all the cards on this item.
Thank you, Cheryl. Any councilmembers have any last questions, comments?
So I was once denied three times to sit on a commission, and please, don't quit. And I mean, I had a pretty good resume, I thought. I finally beat out Danny Azavito, which should tell you something right there. But please, this has been actually one of the best crops that I've seen, and there's lots and lots of stuff to do, so that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
I'd like to add to that. I think this is the best bunch of applicants, qualified people I've seen since I've been on the council, and happy to see all of you turn out and apply. Thank you.
Cheryl? Okay, well, at this time then I can pass out the voting ballots. If you can mark your choices, and then sign and print your name on the ballot, please. Okay, mayor, I have the results. For the Parks and Recreation Commission, I have five votes for Jason Borsma. For the Planning Commission, five votes for Philip Jafarian. For the Historic Preservation Commission, I have five votes for Patricia Overstreet, five votes for Mark Sawyer, five votes for Diana Stiller. For the Economic Development Advisory Council, I have five votes for Scott DeRosa, four votes for Diane Collins, and five votes for Michael Cale. I have split votes for the Streets, Trails, and Utilities Commission, so we will have to vote again for that one. So there's, I don't have an appointment for that one. For Streets, Trails, and Utilities. I have one vote for Cynthia, two votes for Gary, Gary, excuse me, and two votes for For EDAC, five votes for Scott DeRosa, four votes for Diane Collins, five votes for Michael
Casey, do you want to do us another ballot?
Well, then there's one for Bill Schwab, but the three that received the majority votes for EDAC are Scott, Diane, and Michael. So we'll have to do another vote for Streets, Trails, and Utilities Commission. Yeah, this is simply for the Streets, Trails, and Utilities Commission.
Can we change our votes on any others?
Oh, I'll take that one first.
Thank you, Robin.
I was gonna say, that's the pot calling the kettle black, I think.
I know it. I've just been pushing her buttons.
Okay, for the Streets, Trails, and Utilities Commissions, I have two votes for Jim Pollard and three votes for Gary Shown. So he takes the maj, Gary Shown takes the majority for the Streets, Trails, and Utilities Commission.
Thank you all for your applications and your time spent. All very well-deserving. Okay, let's move into finish up. City Council, City Manager, Staff Communications, Kevin.
Just a couple of things, an update on the farmer's market, maybe we could get that, Roger, don't leave yet. Roger, Roger. I'd like to get an update on the farmer, if the farmer's market is dead or alive, and do we have anything on that?
Pardon my.
That's right, yeah, I know, I know.
Yes, the farmer's market, EDAC has been very persistent, mainly Scott DeRosa, our vice chair. He has been relentless in pursuing this project. We, we sent out an RFP for professional managers. We got two responses. We just sent out clarification letters to them, and the deadline was today for responses. And we received two responses, so we are, we are ready to interview these two managers. They are both very experienced, they have a good resume, so it's, it's looking promising. We will see what kind of fee schedule, what kind of services they can provide. We want to make sure this is a turnkey operation, so it's not labor-intensive for our own staff.
And then the other question, I had two more questions for you. One is, we talked about looking at, it sounds like you've gone down Sixth Street, I'm looking forward to hearing about that. Are you also planning on going down Hamner Avenue to look at possible properties that are available and re-categorizing them?
Yes, so our first, after returning from ICSC, our first order of business was to really focus on our 15 prime development sites that we identified and that we were actively marketing at the conference. We've, we've done that, I've, I've mapped those out with, and we've kind of cataloged the responses that we've received for each one. I might add that there's a lot of promising interest on many of those sites. So our next, our next order of business, I'll be sitting down with the Planning Director, and we'll be going through, it's, it's very, it's very labor-intensive to do an exhaustive inventory of sites on, on Hamner, but we can definitely focus on those, those beyond the top 15 development sites, but those that, those secondary sites that have some potential, and then, then we can go from there. But yeah, I, your recommendation of doing this kind of inventory of available sites and the sites that are suitable for the kind of commercial activity we're looking for is, is definitely worthwhile. I just would caution that it's going to take some time to.
Yeah, I was just curious as an update, because I thought I heard that the process had started, and then are we, would it be EDAC that would do the business categorizing in terms of which ones would be, we should aim for with our limited resources?
Yes, I think, I think in fact that you may have been on EDAC when we first, we first convened a subcommittee to identify, we call them target businesses. We, we had categories for retail, restaurant, you know, even broke it up into subcategories like sporting goods, general merchandise, that kind of thing, sit-down dining, fast food. And the EDAC came up with a hit list, so to speak. We filtered it by, by geography, we selected targeted businesses that were not located too close. In other words, they did not have Eastvale or Corona locations, so that Norco might be more competitive. And, and we tailored it to the quality of life that Norco has and the lifestyle we have, so.
Can we see that list maybe at some point?
I'd be happy to, to, you know, repackage that list for.
I mean, obviously through Andy. And then just as a question, at the corner of Valley View and, go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt, you know, that list is not, not up to date, it's probably, it would probably be a good idea for them, for EDAC to take another look at that list and refresh it.
I mean, the purpose of the list, as I remember it, was to pinpoint businesses that would bring in the highest return in terms of sales tax.
Yes.
And that would be conducive to the lifestyle.
Exactly.
Because of our limited amount of time that we have to do the work.
Right, yes.
Of course, that was before Kelly, so.
Right, high-dollar earners.
Right.
But compatible with the Norco lifestyle.
And then my last question is, corner of Valley View and Sixth, that empty lot next to the Norco Deli, is it Valley View across from the church? I got a call today on that, is that actually, are they developing something there, or is it just a sign like the corner of Fourth and Hamner?
Right now, it's just a sign. We haven't heard from them in months. They came in with a concept site plan, but they never filed any application, so it's a sign right now.
Just curious, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Kevin. Ted?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, well, I'm going to LaFco tomorrow for their meeting, and if you look at their agenda, you see how everything's boring, it doesn't apply to us, and luckily, Cheryl, the city clerk, is quick, and she got an email from them, and it says, their item number 10, report on unincorporated islands and pockets. Well, lo and behold, we have this big report, and what it is, this report provides a comprehensive list of existing islands and pockets within Riverside County, and a recap of statutes and commission policies related to islands annexation. Well, our city, we have two right up here off of Bluff Street that they've listed in this report, so I'll be going there to find out what they're, what they're talking about as far as these islands go. Corona has one adjacent to us at the very end, maybe we should take it, I don't know, I'm just gonna go there and figure out what they're trying to do. This isn't anything, by the way, it still has to be approved by the, the existing property owners over there, we're gonna, that we're not gonna automatically take these properties in. It has to be worthwhile, essentially. But I think what the county is doing is they're trying to clean up some of these areas that are essentially county areas that are surrounded by cities, and try to use a law that was passed in 2000 to tell the cities, you gotta clean them up, you gotta take it, we don't want it anymore. So I'll see what they have to say tomorrow.
Good. Robin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure who this is gonna be directed at, but just a request, and if there's been enough time to have an update on the app and what kind of information we're getting from residents on the app, and as far as like work orders generated or information generated or that kind of stuff, just to kind of get some feedback on how that's going and how that's working and all of that. So sometime in the foreseeable future, if that could be listed.
That's one of the agenda in the next town hall meeting, is that correct?
For the town hall meeting, not that it was just an overview and how, how residents can sign up for it or use it, but I think you're looking more for.
What information we're getting there.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Berwin?
Nothing, sir.
Andy?
Nothing.
Lieutenant, I know you have one.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of city council. A couple of weeks ago, I had the pleasure of attending the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Awards Ceremony, and that was a result of one of our deputies here happens to be present tonight for his efforts and hard work in the city of Norco of reducing drunk driving on the streets of city of Norco and helping prevent collisions related to drunken driving. The thing that's remarkable about this achievement, as you know, we don't have a dedicated traffic team, and this deputy works as special enforcement team detail, so he works traffic very rarely, but on occasion, he does work it. So he successfully in 2016 had 14 DUI-related arrests and was the award recipient. So I'd just like to acknowledge Deputy Daryl Robertson for his hard work and success, as noted by the Mothers Against Drunk Drivers, and we appreciate all his efforts, and I'm sure I'll hear about this later, but thank you.
So Daryl, did you want to step up here and say a few words? No?
He's a man of few words.
I know how much you love doing traffic enforcement, and did you want us to put in a good word with the lieutenant?
No, it's okay, sir, I appreciate it.
Coffee with the cop?
Yes, so we're looking at June 28th, I believe I have the correct date now. Again, it's at Polly's Pies from 10 to 12. Members of the community and citizens come and have conversation with your deputies that work your local areas, Daryl will be there, and will be happy to talk with you just about anything in general. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, council, residents, I just want to take the opportunity, it's our last council meeting before the Fourth of July, and urge our residents to take in a professional show. Their locations are available on our fire department website, rbcfire.org, and not take the celebration in their own hands, it's not worth it, especially this year with our dry grasses. We're busy every day throughout the county. In addition to the fines that were, were doubled this year with $2,000 for dangerous fireworks and $1,000 for safe and sane. And briefly what those are, safe and sane is what's approved by the state fire marshal, you can go to Ontario or neighboring cities and buy them, you cannot bring them back here and use them. So expect a citation, and then dangerous fireworks is the ones that you could buy out of state or bring back from Mexico, and they carry that $2,000 fine, and depending on the quantity, could be felonies. So we urge you, please, do not, and pass the word to your neighbors, we're trying to, we've got banners throughout the city, the digital signboards up, the gateway signs up, please don't take the party in your own backyard.
Thank you.
Just say something this time?
That'd be great.
First of all, two things have occurred that are gonna allow me to sleep a little better at night. One is, thank you very much for passing the New World Cloud feature, it's great for emergency preparedness and disaster recovery. And second, tomorrow is our new accounting manager's first day, so if you're in City Hall, feel free to come on over, she has a CPA, and we're really looking forward to the team that we're developing with her presence, so we're gonna have a little something in the morning for her as well, just a, if you're around for breakfast.
What time?
A very small breakfast.
About what time?
Oh, anytime, like nine, moving great. I don't know if she's going to be, she might be signing paperwork, et cetera, at that time, but I don't know Myrna's plan, but we're just really excited she'll be here.
Great.
Thank you.
Brian? Nothing? Good.
I just, just to kind of echo on Scott's comments, is that this weekend is the picnic in the park, which is at the JCSD Eastville thing, has a large public fireworks show. For our residents, make sure your animals are put away for that show, or if you're close in that vicinity to do that. We did send notices out to residents to be aware of that along the Bluffs, which would be closest to that particular activity. And as we mentioned earlier, our Fourth of July activity, a picnic in the park at Pike's Peak Park, along with our mayor's ride in early in the morning. And then the last thing is, is that we, staff, all staff have been working with Silver Lakes to prepare for their January 1st concert and, excuse me, July 1st, yeah, concert, their craft beer show, and also car show, so. And staff's done a really good job of trying to prepare for that, just want to compliment everybody for that.
Thank you, Brian. Steve? Chad? Roger?
As I'm still here, I just wanted to congratulate our two new EDAC members, Ms. Collins and Mr. Cale, and our returning vice chair, Scott DeRosa. I also noticed Bill Schwab is in the audience, and I just wanted to say a little bit about the incredible dedication that he has shown on EDAC for. the incredible dedication that he has shown on EDAC for, well, for as long as I've been around and, and much longer than that, I suppose. He is a, he has always been an incredibly insightful and engaging contributor, somebody that has always had the respect of his peers and frankly, I personally am gonna miss him quite a bit.
He's gonna be back. Cheryl?
Save the day for the next Norco Community Town Hall meeting, Monday, July 24th at 6:30, Nellie Weaver Hall. Agenda to follow soon on our website.
Anything else? Word, John.